Welcome everyone to the regular board meeting of the city commission September the second, two thousand and twenty five. My roommate's birthday, by the way, and Adrian's. Both of them.
Happy birthday.
This time I'll ask the city clerk Beth Davis to please call the roll.
Commissioner Jeff Sanford?
Here.
Commissioner Sharon Neesmith?
Here.
Mayor Tom Watson?
Here.
Commissioner Curtis Maglinger?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Glenn?
Here.
Thank you. If you would, please stand and remove your hat if you have one on for Commissioner Curtis Maglinger to do the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, thank you for protecting our city and blessing us with good neighbors and a safe community. As we serve today, guide our work with clear minds, wise hearts, and a spirit of fairness. Bless our families in every home across the city with peace, joy, and togetherness this holiday season. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda would be a presentation of the holiday downtown events. Some guy named Tim Ross, public events director.
Good evening, mayor, commission. Just wanted to provide everybody kind of an overview update about the holiday events taking place downtown. Most people are familiar with what we call hometown Christmas, which the goal several years ago was just to kind of put a wrapping around everything that happens in all the different facilities downtown. There's a lot that goes on. And so we tried to add some, some holiday decorations and things so people could enjoy multiple things at the same time. So here's a quick kind of overview or kind of a recap of what, of what kind of encompasses hometown Christmas. So that is our tree lighting that we do every year that we did a couple of weeks ago. We typically get, last year, I think we had over sixty thousand folks that came downtown from the tree lighting through the holiday season between events at River Park, Bluegrass Hall of Fame, Convention Center, enjoying different businesses downtown, getting dinner. So obviously, it's a lot of folks that come down over the holiday season. And so we wanted to be able to kind of capture everything in the same place. So nightly, folks can enjoy the dancing lights with the music that are down there every night from five P M. to nine P M. Convention Center all the weekends has got their energy on ice, assuming it's not raining, energy on ice out there at the pier. And then we've already had numerous events with Shop Small and things like that this past weekend. But still to come, we've got, Bluegrass Museum has got a show with Ricky Skaggs. The Care Net, great organization's got their reindeer run coming up this Saturday as a big fundraiser for that organization. And then the Downtown Merchant Group's got their holiday stroll that they're doing with a gnome hunt this weekend as well. Anderson's there, kind of reliving the old days at the Science Museum. And then Nutcracker takes place that first weekend of December every year with multiple shows. The following weekend, we've got Hot Chocolate Hop that happens where we've got a few dozen businesses down there that have got signature hot chocolate drinks for December twelfth and thirteenth. Randy Lanham's got his Christmas jamboree that they always do. Symphony's got a show. Anderson's again at the Science Museum. Convention Center always does a breakfast with Santa. That's got a great turnout every year. And then the Science Museum again with their New Year's Eve celebration. So just over the next few weeks, I think that's another, what, twelve or thirteen different things taking place in addition to the lights and things. So so many things through to for folks to enjoy throughout the holiday season. We just wanted to kind of recap those. They can get a schedule online, all of our social pages. Shaley and everybody continues to update those regularly with what's coming up over the next few days. So come downtown, enjoy the lights, and enjoy the holiday season. And that was it.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Who put that tree up? Public Works?
Yes, the big trees, Public Works. They do, Public Works actually does the vast majority of all the lights and wreaths and everything down there. They got a big crew that does a great job.
I guarantee it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, snow routes or routes. Andrew Osborne, street manager.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'm Andrew Osborne. I'm the street manager for the city of Owensboro. Our address is fourteen ten West Fifth. I'm here this evening to give you all a presentation on how the city street department handles inclement weather. Any good plan starts with a prepared staff. We conduct winter operations trainings in early fall, starting with instructional snow and ice removal videos, practice driving on controlled road courses, and drive run practices of snow routes. New drivers are paired with experienced operators for their first season, and cross training is provided across public works departments. Through preventative maintenance, we're able to ensure all snow equipment and vehicles are inspected, serviced, and repaired as needed. Staff also review and restock essential supplies such as salt, calcium chloride, blades, and plow markers to ensure readiness for winter operations. Our winter operation fleet includes six tandem dump trucks, two single axle dump trucks, all equipped with salt spreaders and snow plows. We also run three brine trucks, three bicoats with plows, and a wheel loader. In this slide, you'll see our snow route maps. We run six routes consisting of one hundred and thirty miles of street. The maps are available on the city's website if anybody would like to look at the routes. To prepare the streets prior to snow, we apply salt brine to the roadways. The department maintains twelve hundred gallons of salt brine on site. It takes us roughly eight hours to go across all the snow routes with brine. Brine can be applied up to seventy-two hours before a snow event, and it can be done so as long as road temps are above fifteen degrees. However, we do not apply brine if rain is expected because it'll precipitation will wash it right away. During a winter weather event, salt and sometimes calcium chloride are used to help melt snow once it is on the roadway. The department stores twenty-five hundred tons of salt, six The department stores 2,500 tons of salt, 6,000 gallons of calcium chloride on site. Salting routes takes roughly four hours while salting and plowing together takes about eight. Each route of salting takes approximately 80 tons of salt when applied at a rate of 200 to 400 pounds per lane mile. Calcium chloride is also applied to the salt when temperatures are below 26 degrees. It helps to enhance the melting effectiveness of the salt. We hope this presentation has helped you all and the public have a better understanding of the street department's winter weather operations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Bob?
So I know we have signs up that say primary snow route, you know, don't park your car.
Correct.
So do you cover both primary and secondary routes when you brine and salt?
When we brine and salt, we do primary and secondary. The purpose in the primary route would be like if it's an overwhelming snow, we would maintain the primaries and get those clear because of, you know, emergency services and things like that. But secondary routes would be hit after that if it was a really heavy snow. But generally, like this morning, we kept everything clear.
Yeah. Oh, the runs look great.
Thank you.
Congrats.
That was all our guys.
Yeah, they did a great job, as they always do. Last question, the brine, is it beet juice?
Nope, it is just salt brine. So we take the actual salt.
Did we ever use beet juice?
At times, I think they've, they tried it back in the day, but at the expense of it. And we can actually make the brine ourselves. So we take salt that we would put on the road, and we have a machine that it blends it with the water, and it gets us the right salinity.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for your hard work and your crew's hard work.
Thank you.
For keeping us safe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Item 5A, consider approval of minutes dated November the 18th, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussions, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. This time, I'll call on our West Bank City Clerk Beth Davis to consider these board appointments for me.
Owensboro City Utility Commission appoint Kyle Ah to fill the remainder of an unexpired term ending December 31, 2025, replacing Paul Martin, and a three-year term effective January 1, 2026. Reappoint Landon Tong to a three-year term effective January 1, 2026. Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund Board closed. Ratify the election of Marty Thorpe to a one-year term effective January 1, 2026, and appoint Chief James Howard to a one-year term effective January 1, 2026. Grad Board of Directors reappoint Patsy Mayfield as the Davis County Mayor's representative to a two-year term effective January 1, 2026, and reappoint Nate Pagin as the mayor's designee to a two-year term effective January 1, 2026. Seven Hills Neighborhood Alliance reappoint Dinah Crowley, Kay Yazzer-Taylor, and David Norris to a two-year term effective December 14th, 2025. Owensboro Metropolitan Planning Commission appoint Blank Edge to a four-year term effective January 1, 2026, and Ambulance Contracting Authority reappoint Ted Johnston to a four-year term effective January 1, 2026.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve these appointments. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 6, Mr. Taylor. First reading, no vote.
Ordinance 20-2025 and ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026, and amending ordinance 6-2025 to carry over appropriation from prior year, appropriate additional funds for capital project and various building construction, to provide funding for a grant match, to receive and appropriate grant funds, and to appropriate funds for a land purchase. Introduced and publicly read on first reading the second day of December, 2025.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, this is first reading of a budget amendment ordinance for our current fiscal year. I believe this is the third budget amendment in the current year. And so like most amendments, this includes various items that have accumulated over the last few months. For example, various grants that we've received are incorporated into the budget. And most significantly, it includes a grant that we were awarded to offset the cost of an additional police officer. If you remember back during the budget discussions, I think we added two additional officers in the budget. There was discussion about adding a third officer, and my response was, let's apply for a grant. And we did that, and we were awarded that grant. So we would be able to add an additional officer at a reduced cost to the city. So that's certainly good news. And this amendment includes various other grants that we've received as well. The amendment includes various other items you've already approved, such as appropriating funds for the purchase of the Walnut Street and Panel Properties. Funds are included to renovate the bathrooms at Ben Hawes Park, and then to finish the pickleball facility. And then finally, there's a carryover for an approved item in the last fiscal year that I missed in doing carryovers at our last amendments, and my apologies on that. But overall, it's a fairly standard amendment with a hodgepodge of items that have collected over the last two or three months.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any just questions about that? Okay, thank you. We'll go to item 7, municipal order.
Municipal Order 28-2025, a municipal order approving a 2.8% cost of living increase for eligible annuities of the Owensboro Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund, closed. Read for approval on one reading the second day of December, 2025.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager, please.
Yes, sir. This municipal order approves a 2.8% cost of living adjustment for pensioners of the closed police and fire retirement plan. This is an old, closed, legacy plan and is not the current retirement system called the county employee retirement system that all of our current and more recent employees are a part of. This 2.8% COLA was recommended by the board of the plan at their meeting last month. Last year, we gave them a 2.5% COLA, so it's a little bit larger this year. This closed pension plan has no assets, so the city just funds the cost for this plan every year in our general fund. And 18 members remain as annuities in this plan, down from 20 at this time last year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Did I make a motion to approve this yet? I did?
We did.
Good. Let's vote on it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, please.
Municipal Order 29-2025, a municipal order approving a 2.8% cost of living increase for all eligible pension annuities under the closed city employees pension fund. Read for approval on one reading the second day of December, 2025.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager.
Yes, so like the last item, this municipal order approves a cost of living increase for a closed legacy plan. The last plan was for police and fire. This plan covered all other city employees and also OMU employees from the past. So it is also providing a 2.8% cost of living adjustment, which was also recommended by the board of that plan when they met last month. This particular plan has 10 remaining members. It is financially sound, so it is at no cost to the city.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8, City Manager Items.
First, Mayor, if you would acknowledge Angela Wanniger to present the October financial report.
Angela Wanniger, you have been recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting the October financials to you and also want to apologize for the delay in the October financials, but we have a real good reason for that delay. The whole finance department was busy processing property tax bills. Just to get that money in the bank is also a very heavy month for the payroll withholding as well as net profits. So we were slam dunk getting stuff into the bank. So a little bit later with the October report, but that's the reason why. So with that, for our first slide, for the month of October, our actual revenues of $11,665,381 were greater than budgeted revenues of $9,792,051, resulting in a positive variance of $1,873,330. This variance is primarily due to higher insurance premium license fees and property taxes. For the four months ended October, our total actual revenues of $26,914,803 were more than the budgeted revenues of $25,721,000 for a positive variance of $1,193,803. This variance is primarily due to higher insurance premium license fees and net profit license fees. It's partially offset by timing in the TIF receipts from the state and the Riverport dividend. And just to add to that, typically, we would have the reimbursement from the state for the Gateway TIF, actually both TIFs, around October, and we don't, we don't have that yet for the Gateway TIF. And so there's a reason, that's the reason for that difference there. If I keep asking. Okay, for the next slide is the month of October for expenditures. Actuals were $5,892,677, which was less than budgeted expenditures of $6,884,142, for a variance of $991,465. This is primarily due to timing of an incentive payment. For the four months ended October, actual expenditures of $24,57,403 were less than budgeted expenditures of $28,440,240, for a variance of $4,382,837. This variance is primarily due to timing and transfer to OMU, the incentive activity, transfers in savings, and personnel services. For the last slide, this chart demonstrates the cyclical nature of the city's monthly revenues and expenses. This is the nature of finances for the city. Expenses are depicted by the red bar. Likewise, revenues are depicted by the green bar. Revenues are higher in the months of October and November due to collection of property taxes. And as you can see here on the slide, where revenues spiked up real high. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Glenn.
This is like from a layperson's perspective, so they, we're getting a lot of feedback on Facebook about people being outraged about the insurance premium tax. Can you just remind our viewers what that money is used to pay for?
Good point.
Certainly, yeah. Well, 6% of it goes to the general fund, and then there's 4% of it that goes to a fund that we call downtown revitalization. And what that does, that 4% services the debt payments that the city has as a result of issuing bonds for revitalizing that beautiful downtown, our number one playground in the whole wide world. And it brings people to our city to stay at the hotels and come there. I know people that come for the park and stay the night. And so that's what the IPLF, as we call it, that 4% is. And it is scheduled to sunset at the end of the debt service.
Thank you very much, Angela, and thank you and your staff for your great work. We really appreciate you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this financial report for audit. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, consider personnel appointments.
Yes, tonight we have the following. Katrina Lee, probationary full-time non-civil service appointment to bus driver with Public Works Transit Department, effective December 8th, contingent upon successful completion of all post offer pre-employment requirements. And then for regular full-time non-civil service appointments of Darren Brown, Anthony Asparza, Noah Hopper, Dominic Jackson, and Derek Jesse as police officers with the Police Department effective December 2nd. Sarah Henry, labor maintenance helper with Public Works Ground Department, effective December 9th. And Ashley Goddard, administrative aide with Finance and Support Services, effective December 17th. Mayor Commissioners, you'll notice there, there were five, I think, officers that were appointed to regular status. Those were the first OPD local academy cohort there. So glad to see not only they graduated the academy, they've done well, and they are now coming off of probation, so it's good to see that.
Sure is. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Got anything you want to say, chief? No, you're good. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. City Manager comments?
No other comments.
Communication from elected officials. Commissioner Sanford.
Just a few things, Mayor. We've got some athletic stuff going on here. I wanted to mention real quick, the grind basketball tournament. They called me, the director, and he wanted me just to make a mention. That starts Thursday through Sunday, if I'm not wrong there. And Thursday, it's free to get in. Some of the top teams and top players in the entire country at the Sports Center. Davis County, I believe, is playing in the tournament too, so something to check out. I want to say congrats to two football teams, Owensboro High School and Owensboro Catholic High School Football. They'll be playing in Lexington this weekend. I think one Catholic is Friday, and Owensboro is Saturday. Great job, and that's something to be proud of. It's something those kids will remember forever. I just hope they bring home the hardware and get it done, and I think they, I think they got a good shot at doing that. Also, I want to make a mention to the fire department. You guys have been really busy lately. Great job. Nobody really thinks about it till there is a fire, and there's been some fires, so you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for all you do. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Glenn.
I want to echo Commissioner Sanford's huge cheer of good luck to our two teams, two of 12 that have made the finals of the various levels that'll compete in Lexington. That's exciting for the students, the schools, and the city. Want to mention the movie that Bachelor Santa that was aired at River Park over the weekend, and we got to see it. And I thought it was a beautiful way to promote our community. It was fun to watch some local folks perform, but it was just a really nice experience, and I hope that that's the beginning of a lot more film and television opportunities for our community, so.
That's it?
Thank you. Commissioner Neesmith.
I'll just echo what Bob just said, Commissioner Glenn said. The most exciting part about the Bachelor Santa movie was the about five or six minutes in, the scene became the river, like the, the park with the river and the lighted bridge, and everybody in the River Park Center, there was about 900 people there clapped, and it was, it was kind of nice because it was very spontaneous and very showed the pride that everybody had. So it was really cool. And then I want to give a shout out to our Claude Bacon, our Economic Development Director, because I didn't realize he was going to be the number two leading man in there because he had a whole lot of screen time. So the movie is actually going to be coming to, I believe, the Malko Theater this Friday, and I did read that it is going to be in four different states. So, you know, you never know whether something's local, is that going to be just local or where it is. So if any of you are Hallmark movie fans, this is sort of the way it is, so there's always a happy ending and a lot of fun in between. So great to have the, the sound production and those happening, and looking forward to lots of other opportunities to keep those in town, and especially with the state funding, the film industry itself. And it was kind of fun because a lot of it was also filmed in the Hampton Inn, and I got to see several of my employees go through there. So I will be figuring out how to make sure all of them get to go see the movie and stuff because it was, it was really, they didn't have speaking parts, but they did, they were outstanding and should get Academy Awards for them, so.
Don't get Claude's head any bigger, will you? My goodness.
I was not there. I just want to let you know.
Who'd you have to get, Mag?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I echo the fellow commissioners, so thank you very much. That's it.
Okay. You're welcome. Open public forum. Members of the audience may address the Board of Commissioners on any matter of public concern that was not on the agenda. Comments are limited to issues within the scope and responsibility of the commission. Commission meetings are held to conduct city business for the benefit of Owensboro citizens and taxpayers. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the City Commission, please make their way to the podium to be recognized. Speakers must state their name and address for the clerk's record and limited remarks to three minutes or less, since the item is not on the agenda. No responses required from staff or the Board of Commissioners. Anybody like to speak? Hmm. Okay. I'll go to item 11, closed session. I'll make a motion to enter into closed session under carer's 61.8110 parentheses 1, close parentheses, open parentheses G, for a discussion. for discussions with representatives of a business entity concerning a specific proposal. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. There will be no, there will not be any business following the closed session.
All right. Go to your rooms, boys and girls.